Live streaming now.
The case which is having...
Counsel, I mean all ready?
Yes.
Okay, if you have your hardy rights to sit after you want us to. Uh, live streaming is on. Have we this case been scheduled for today? Two minutes, I suppose, we've got. You got my email?
No, because it's obviously mine.
Oh, but I've sent it.
Why is it?
It didn't turn it?
No, Rose.
Which is yours?
Mine, mine. I took over Denise. It's all right, you should probably forward it to me. What was it about?
Just about. It was just an interview.
Anything, anything. I'll write it down.
I'll just forward you the, uh, email later.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Sorry.
We're gonna see each other.
I know.
Are they all out there, the judges?
No. Not yet.
The courtroom is ready.
Sorry?
He's ready. And you know, we're not... Counsel, what are the bundles? Bundle three, on the judge's desk, if you introduce them.
Okay, so...
When, you know, when you're pitching to your right?
Uh, so is that the bundles of authorities?
Yeah, I brought a third bundle of authorities today.
Okay, okay, yes.
So you put it up there. Thank you, sir.
Might you also put this up? Also another authority.
If you could be so kind to introduce these.
I shall indeed. That'll be down in my net.
Okay. They will introduce these bundles.
All right, let's mind that. Um, I, I can, yes. Yeah, no, no, I can. It depends on whether it's my mom who happens to be watching for us.
Well, she hasn't, she's probably got much more precise comments.
She's gonna be like, "You go, girl."
Shane can't call it.
Yeah, that might be asked a bit much.
The courtroom is ready.
Get back here.
Rose, anyone? Your phone number will be the same as the each other.
I don't even know my number, it's just emails, easy.
Oh, well. Court ready.
I don't know who's gonna knock. Whoever's there, knock.
Court rise.
Applications in a matter of between on the application of Winfield and Canterbury City Council and another.
Thank you very much. You'll have seen that we came into court wearing masks, we've taken the masks off. We will continue not to wear masks during the hearing. We note that all advocates are unmasked, that is perfectly in order. But in any event, we suggest that the advocate on his or her feet at a given moment should unless there are particular reasons to want to wear a mask, not to wear a mask. Is that all right?
My lord, yes, I'm grateful.
I think it's important, in the times we're in, to make that clear at the outset.
My lord, yes. And we've positioned ourselves so that we are socially distant.
I also observe for the benefit of those watching on live stream that sensible and suitable social distancing arrangements are also, in any event, in place.
My lord, yes, I anticipate it.
I hope we've made it clear to those watching what the arrangements are, though they'll be abundantly clear to those in court. Um, I've mentioned live stream, the hearing is being livestreamed. Those legal representatives who have been able and wanted to attend are here, that means and includes all counsel for all parties. Uh, and some of the, those instructing counsel, but not all. Some elected not to be present in court, but will be following the proceedings on live stream in any event, I dare say. Those are the initial preliminaries. The next preliminary is timetable. Has the timetable been agreed by council or not?
My lord, no, we haven't discussed the timetable, although I did consider the question on the way to court, and I wondered whether it might be suitable if I make my submissions up until about twelve thirty.
Yes.
Um, which will allow the council both before and after lunch, and then the interested parties, and then time for reply.
Yes. Well, that seems eminently suitable to me. Let me check that my colleagues agree with that. Yes, we're all happy with that, Mr. Allen. Thank you very much. You, and you can assume, for it is true, um, that, um, we are all thoroughly familiar with materials, including the authorities, which I think have now been supplemented by additional cases. Thoroughly familiar with the arguments on paper. Uh, thoroughly familiar with the background. Therefore, none of that needs to be re, um, deployed in argument before us. So that, I hope, will help us to make good progress.
My lord, yes, I'm very grateful indeed. My lord, I'm conscious I haven't introduced my learned friends to the court yet.
No, please do.
If I might do so and then deal with, um, various housekeeping matters.
Yes.
Uh, so I appear on behalf of the appellant in this matter. Uh, my learned friend, Ms. Taffor, appears on behalf of the council in both cases. Uh, my learned friend, Mr. Tabacchnick, QC, appears on behalf of Hoplins in the Hoplins case.
Yes.
Uh, and Miss Wigley, on behalf of HNC in the Chislet case.
Thank you.
I think strictly speaking, you appear for the applicant?
Oh, yeah, did I say appellant? My apologies, my lord, yes. Quite right, I appear for the appelle, the applicant in this matter. Um, my lords and my ladies, you'll see that there's before you a new bundle of authorities. Uh, that just updates all the authorities that were provided and requested to be provided, uh, yesterday by the court. A, um, hard copy was requested for this morning.
Well, what I actually asked for was the additional authorities only, because of course by the time that that was announced to us, we had got well into our preparation.
Yes, and that's what's before your lordship, but, uh, I think the additional authorities, yes, the additional authorities are before.
So we're up to sixty-one?
We, we are, we are, um, although...
This re, re, reconsideration.
I, I am not intending to go to sixty-one authorities, my lord.
Well, you won't have time if you're going to twelve thirty.
Quite. Uh, there should also, uh, be, uh, three bundles, a core supplementary and a reopening bundle, and then the skeletons, which your lordship has indicated, um, has, you have already had an opportunity to peruse.
We have, and we've taken the opportunity to.
I'm very grateful. My lord, if I may outline the structure of my submissions.
Yes.
Um, in brief, um, as has been prefaced, um, this is an application to ask the court to exercise the jurisdiction in CPR Rule fifty-two thirty to reopen Lord Justice Lewison's final determination, refusing reopening of his refusal of permission to appeal. And there are two key bases on which that application is made. First, uh, Lord Justice Lewison did not deal lawfully with the application to reopen in light of the cases of what I'll call sylphate or chilphate, but I'll go with sylphate, resebec, capfora, and interfact, or, um, cases of the Court of, of Justice of the European Union. And the reason that that unlawfulness occurred is that the applicant asked for questions to be referred to the Court of Justice of the European Union. And in the circumstances of this case, in order to comply with the principle of effectiveness, Lord Justice Lewison was required to engage with the fact that the request to refer had been made and to give reasons why that reference was not made, or why it was act clair against the applicant that the points need not be referred. And I'll take the court to the judge's decision, his lordship's decision, which shows that that interaction with the question was not undertaken. This means in my submission that the, um, that the Lord Justice adopted an approach to the referral request, which meant that it was incapable of being a correct or lawful approach in light of the case law. This necessarily corrupted the process itself and is an error that is more than simply a wrong decision. It is an error that reaches the acceptably high bar of reopening. Second, Lord Justice Lewison did not deal lawfully with the second reopening application because he did not address and/or erd in law in relation to the grounds of appeal previously raised. And the reason I mention this is because that bolsters or gives the reason for why. The first point is a good point because Lord Justice Lewison didn't deal with the CJ EU points either as freestanding points under the grounds of appeal or separately in response to the request to refer. With that introduction, I intend to take my submissions in the following order to give just a very high level introduction of the facts in light of your lordship's indication to me earlier.
Yeah.
Then to give an overview of the jurisdiction of Rule fifty-two thirty, recognizing it to be exceptional and recognizing it will be engaged only where there's some obvious or egregious error that has vitiated the process itself. Then I will move to the CJ EU case law referred to in the first ground. And then I will address the two key questions in the main authority under fifty-two thirty as to whether an application for permission to reopen, um, or an application to reopen, uh, should succeed or not.
In which case are you referring to? Goring?
That's Goring, yes.
Because that is the recent, uh, decision of this court in the planning context.
Yes.
Judgment of the court differently constituted in which the master of the roles presided.
My lord, yes. And that is the case which will be the focus of, um, step three in my submissions. My, with that preamble, a very high level, um, overview of the facts, the court will be aware that this case arises out of, um, the, uh, proximity of two development sites to Stodmarsh, which is, um, a site with the very highest level of protection. It is a special area of conservation, a special protection area under the habitats directive. There's a Ramsar site under the Ramsar conventional weapons, a site of special scientific interest. And the two sites in question are separated from it by just twenty to thirty metres. If I could ask the court, and this is the only time in the facts I'll go to the bundle,
Right.
Um, to take up, please, the reopening bundle, um, either Hoplins or Chislet. I'm, uh, going with Hoplins, I think the page numbers are the same.
Well, it's a tab six.
In tab six.
Yes, page eighty-eight.
My lord, yes.
It's an area close to Canterbury, uh, and adjacent to the Canterbury to Margate Road.
My lord, yes. And if your lordship turns over to eighty-nine, you'll see on that map where Stodmarsh is, where Chislet is, and where Hoplins is. There's, um, an aerial view on, on ninety. And then on ninety-one, um, is the document when it was envisaged that the two sites may come forward as a joint proposal, although that did not, um, in fact transpire. So that gives an understanding of where the key elements are, um, that underlie this application.
Yes.
Um, it's, I think, common ground that the impacts of housing nearby to the Stodmarsh site might be capable, I put it no higher as common ground, might be capable of impacting the Stodmarsh site. Um, for a number of reasons, because of recreational use, because of cat predation, and increasingly natural England is concerned about the deteriorating water quality in Stodmarsh and the increase of effluent output from development, um, further impacting and causing harm in that regard. Uh, my lord, you'll be aware that, um, there are, as I said, the two sites. Hoplins Farm, for which outline planning permission was granted in twenty seventeen for up to two hundred and fifty homes, now increased to three hundred and twenty-five homes, plus a number of facilities, um, a community centre, retail, et cetera. And the, um, decision under judicial review was a reserved matters application, um, decided in twenty nineteen. The grounds of review, uh, in that matter are set out in my skeleton argument, um, and I don't, uh, repeat them in this overview, um, other than to say that they dealt with matters relating to, um, habitats and a purported remedial habitats, um, regulations assessment and the standard for that assessment. Mrs. Justice Lang, in her judgment, dismissed the grounds, um, in their substance, and also as a matter of discretion, a point to which I'll return, um, when discussing fifty-two thirty. In the grounds of appeal against that determination, uh, there was a request to refer certain questions to the Court of Justice of the European Union. Turning to Chislet, that deals with, um, a former colliery site and is an application for outline planning permission for three hundred and seventy dwellings. Again, the judicial review grounds are set out in the skeleton argument, and I won't go over them in any detail. They relate to the interaction between hu, um, habitats assessment and environmental impact assessment. And also, again, the standard for habitats assessment and how that's addressed by the court in a judicial review claim. Again, Mrs. Justice Lang dismissed, um, the judicial review substantively, and, um, it did not in that matter exercise discretion. Again, the grounds of appeal dealt with the, um, European Union points and referred or asked for questions to be referred to the Court of Justice of the European Union. My lord, unless there's anything else, by way of very brief overview of the facts, I propose to move on to the jurisdiction in fifty-two thirty.
Yes.
And, um, if I can ask the court to go to the, um, authorities bundle. And, um, forgive me if I'm slightly slower, I'm, I, I've gone with the recommendation to try and move electronically, so the bundle is all electronic. But hopefully, it will work nice.
That always takes more time.
Yes.
Welcome to the modern world.
Yes. Thank you very much, my lord. Um, i- if I can ask your lordships, please to go to tab forty-nine in that bundle, which is the case of Goring on Thames Parish Council versus South Oxfordshire District Council.
Yes.
And as my lord, Lord Justice Limblon indicated, um, this is a case in which fifty-two thirty was sought to be relied on in a, in a planning context. And, uh, your lordship and ladyship will see that fifty-two thirty is set out at paragraph eight, um, on page one, two, one, five of the bundle. And at paragraph nine, the court there refers to the, uh, Court of Appeal decision that essentially gave rise to the fifty-two thirty jurisdiction, the Court of Appeal in Taylor and Lawrence, and which confirmed that there is jurisdiction to reopen a final decision so as to avoid real injustice in circumstances that are exceptional. And over the page, it's emphasized, uh, that it should be clearly established that there will be a significant injustice that has probably occurred and that there's no alternative remedy. And the court will be aware that my submission is that we reached that, um, three-part test. Um, there's then reference to the White Book and to the, uh, commentary in the White Book. And I'll, I'll draw attention, um, in particular to in paragraph twelve in relation to the case law, just the final two sentences before the quote, um, that the jurisdiction can be properly invoked where it's demonstrated that the integrity of the earlier litigation process, whether at trial or at first appeal, has been critically undermined. Uh, the court then goes on in the next paragraph, paragraph thirteen, to deal with Barclays Bank and Guy. That's the case that was just handed up this morning separately. I don't propose to go to it separately from this, um, extract in this decision. And that established that, uh, it's set up there in the extract, if it can be shown that a judge has completely failed to understand a clearly articulated point, it is possible that his decision might be susceptible to being reopened, particularly if there are, are facts that are extreme. And just pausing there, if I might make two submissions. Um, first, and I make these submissions, and in, in fact, the entirety of my submission, um, with the greatest deference to Lord Justice Lewison's experience as a, um, judge, and indeed as a judge that deals with planning matters and CJ EU or EU law matters. But it is, of course, possible for even the most experienced of judges to err and to err in a way that meets this standard so that there is a failure to deal with or to, um, understand a clearly articulated point. And everything that I say about Lord Justice Lewison's, um, decisions in this case must be understood against that background that I have just outlined. Secondly, in this, um, extract, there's reference to the type of facts that might be sufficiently extreme to give rise to the jurisdiction of fifty-two thirty being, um, relied upon or being successfully invoked by an applicant. And it's right that the extreme nature of the facts in this example, um, are, uh, are, are indeed extreme. The judge failing to read the right papers, never realising what papers were, et cetera, et cetera. But my submission in that regard is that the facts don't have to be of that quality. And it is correct as a matter of interpretation of fifty-two thirty that the jurisdiction can be available in circumstances such as this, where a point in particular, a point that relates to referring questions to the CJ EU has been clearly articulated and articulated again but is not on the face of the decision dealt with in the way that is required by the case law.
So that's because there's some magic about a reference to the CJ EU.
My lord, yes, and that, that's the second part to which I'll turn after this.
So that, that, that's the point.
That's, that's, that's a, that's the key point.
Because every unsuccessful litigant says the judge didn't understand it.
Well, not ev, well...
Trust me.
Perhaps, perhaps not.
Having been doing this job for a very long time, I can tell you, every litigant who one turns down
Yes.
says, "The judge is an idiot, he didn't understand the points." So it's got to be the magic of the reference to the CJ EU, because otherwise it's every civil case one's ever sat in.
My lord, I, I don't accept that dichotomy. And if I could just explain why. So your lordship is right that the thing that makes this case particularly, um, arguable is that it deals with a CJ EU reference, and I'll take your lordship to the case law. It's not magic, it's very clearly articulated in the decisions of the Court of Justice of the European Union. But I don't accept that the dichot, that the dichotomy is either one has to show something of that nature or it's just every applicant that says that the judge got something wrong.
No, you have to show something exceptional.
Correct.
You say that's the reference point.
That's the ref-
It can't be the judge not understanding the argument, because as I say, that happens every time.
The, and the reason I don't accept my lordship's dichotomy is this.
The trouble is, if we say- The trouble is, if we said, "Well, you can do that if a judge didn't understand", then we wouldn't get any real work done, because we'd be dealing with reconsiderations all the time.
My lord, two points in that regard. First, if I can just explain why I don't accept my lordship's dichotomy. In this case, clear points other than the CJ EU reference question point were put as a basis, first, for permission to appeal, and then as a basis on which the 5230 jurisdiction should be exercised in the first application. And there will certainly not be every case, as my lordship posits, in which the decision that makes, that records what the judge's decision is simply does not deal with those points, and those points being points that are required to at least be referred to however briefly.
Yeah, well, they're not dealing with points, as you can imagine, is also a very, very common line of criticism of judges below.
My lord, yes.
And, and as you, I'm sure, know, that's not usually a reason for saying, "Well, therefore, there's something wrong with the underlying judgement."
Exactly so. But again, it's very unusual. My lord, I will thoroughly address my lordship's point, that this is every, this is the gripe of every unsuccessful appellant. And secondly, the other point that my lord, your lordship raises is that this court is at risk of being overwhelmed by unmeritorious 5230 applications. And my answer to that is twofold. First of all, your lordship will have seen in the White Book commentary the history of 5230 coming into being, and the fact that the Taylor case, to which Goring just referred, when the original jurisdiction was put in place to reopen, that did trigger a tsunami of applications unmeritoriously put forward.
Yeah.
And the 5230 rule was then put in place in order to make it clear what the bar was that had to be jumped by an applicant, and that, and it's clear that that has, in a sense, done its job, that the court is not currently overwhelmed by 5230 applications.
Well, if it had done its job, this court wouldn't have had to have said what it did in Goring.
My lady, if I may, perhaps saying it did its job was putting it too glibly. It certainly avoided my Lord, Lord Justice Coulson's concern, which is that the court would be overwhelmed by unmeritorious applications. That's not to say that the court will never be confronted with applications that don't meet the standard. That's a very different thing. But my submission, and my quite strong submission, is that allowing 5230 and reopening this final decision in this case certainly is not opening the floodgates in every case.
The question is not perhaps ultimately one of the courts being overwhelmed or floodgates opening. It is whether the principle of finality enshrined in the rules, which embodied the Taylor and Lawrence jurisprudence, is offended by an application such as this one. If the answer to that is no, it's not offended, then the question of tsunamis and floodgates and all the rest of it wasn't arise.
My lord, yes.
So focus should be on whether this application is repugnant to the principle of finality as enshrined in the rules.
My lord, yes. And whether-
Is that right?
And whether the standard is met. So that's, in a sense, that's the key question, is whether, no matter what, whether this is a first application under 5230 or a second application under 5230, does it meet the standard?
However, where my lords and my ladies' observation impinge on that is that this is, on any view, an exceptional, a highly exceptional jurisprudence.
Yes.
And therefore, you do have to show something that is truly, I'll use the word egregious.
My lord, yes.
Do you accept that?
My lord, that's terminology that's drawn from the case law.
It is.
Exceptional, highly exceptional, egregious, all of those words are in the case law, and obviously, they are accepted.
I mean, egregious means shockingly bad.
Indeed, yes. Which is why I made it absolutely plain at the outset what the focus of this application was and why it is said that that standard is met. If I may say one further thing on that point before I return to Goring, and it is this. While your lordship is absolutely right to emphasize the level that has to be reached in order to show that 5230 is engaged, it cannot be right that that standard is set in the court's mind so highly that it is a bar that can never be jumped. And one must always balance the egregious nature of the error that has to be shown against the justification for 5230 existing in the first place. And that balances the need for finality in decision-making against the equally important obligation for there to be a way in which a significant injustice can be addressed, where that injustice goes to the heart, goes to the nature, goes to the whole integrity of the process. And so it must always be remembered that this is a balancing exercise. And I don't shrink at all from the level of error that has to be shown, but I do emphasize that the importance that section 50, that rules 5230 places on the ability for an applicant to come to this court and ask for something to be reopened is because of fundamental principles of justice and ensuring that the process of legal consideration is properly upheld.
When considering the fundamental principles of justice, is the court obliged also to take into account the interests of the opposing parties in finality?
My lady, yes, and that's a key element of the whole question of finality. And I will address in due course my learned friends for Hoplins submissions in that regard, and indeed the other submissions that are put in that regard. It is absolutely, as your ladyship suggests, a balancing, a question of balance. But I suppose the fundamental point that I'm making is that although it is a question of balance, it must be approached as a question of balance. It is, there are equally important values that are at play on both sides of this balancing question. So one further point, if I may, in the case of Goring, and this is at paragraph 31 in the judgment, at page 1223 of the bundle. And this is where the court records that in the context of an application for permission to appeal, whose consideration is said to have been critically undermined or corrupted, the first question will be whether the judge whose decision is the subject of the application to reopen has sufficiently confronted and dealt with the grounds of appeal. And that really was what I was, I had in mind in response to my Lord, Lord Justice Coulson's questions, that the Court of Appeal has itself recognized that the first question to be asked in this element of the application of rule 5230 is whether the questions have sufficiently been confronted and dealt with. Second, if the conclusion is reached that the process has been critically undermined, it is still in any event necessary for the court to consider whether, had it not been so, it's highly likely or powerfully probable that the decision for the application for permission to appeal would have been different, and that permission would have been granted. And those are the two key questions that I'll address at the end of my submissions as to why, in my submission, this application should succeed. My lord, one final point on this overview of rule 5230, and this is the question of whether it is a jurisdiction that can be exercised in relation to a decision under rule 5230. So the second bite question, as one of my learned friends has put it. And if the court has 5230 open, either in the White Book or indeed further up in the Goring decision, there are two points to be made on this. First, it's very clear that under 5230 bracket seven, there is no right of appeal or review from a decision on a judge on an application under the rule. Not surprising. And my learned friends say against me, "But this is exactly what we're trying to achieve. We're just appealing."
Why, why, forgive me, I'm so sorry, I'm interrupting you. Why is it not surprising?
My lord, it's not surprising because it's an aspect of the balance in relation to finality. So in my submission, it's not surprising because when the 5230 balance has been undertaken and finality has come down in a particular way, then it's not surprising that appeal is not permitted. Secondly, it's not surprising because the bar that has to be jumped in order to appeal against a decision is a very different bar from that in the 5230 application itself. And this is why I say that my learned friends are wrong when they submit that this is simply an appeal. This is not an appeal against the first determination, because the standard that has to be met in order for this application to succeed is nothing like the appeal standard.
What about a second attempt?
And this is why I asked the court to have the wording, because 5231 says this, that the Court of Appeal will not reopen a final determination of any appeal unless it's necessary to do so the circumstances are such that there is an alternative remedy. And the question then is, is the decision under scrutiny here a final determination of any appeal? And the answer to that question is yes. There's nothing on the face of this rule that says it cannot be applied to a final determination made under the rule.
No, but your point about 5237 wouldn't apply, would it, to a second attempt at reopening?
My lord, which element of the point that I made in relation to seven?
The contrast you drew with the normal standard for permission to appeal.
Correct.
That is.
Correct, correct. So really, my submission is-
And we are in the context, aren't we, of a second attempt at reopening?
Yes, we are. But that has only arisen because in the applicant's submission, the standard to reopen has been met again. And that's because the key error, as my Lord, Lord Justice Coulson pointed out, on relation to the reference to the CJ EU, was not addressed in the decision that dealt with the first application to reopen.
So it would follow, would it, that the test here is whether the decision that is the centerpiece of this application was an egregious, i.e. shockingly bad outcome for a consideration of an egregious, that is, shockingly bad, first decision? Is that it?
My lord, no.
No.
And I, it's not right to pile up or to suggest that the standard for application of 5230 in this case is somehow doubly egregious. It's not a question of just squaring the level that has to be reached.
So you can have any number of attempts at reopening, and the same base standard applies each time, is your submission, is it?
My lord, my submission is that the standard does not vary.
So what happens if you fail here? Can you have another go on your submission?
In principle, in theory, that is possible, of course.
And if you don't like the answer on that occasion, yet again?
In principle, my lord, endlessly mirrored one against the other.
Well, endlessly mirrored, I think it's a continuum, forgive me, I'm so sorry. Do finish and then ask back.
My lord, I'm very grateful. In practice, my lord, my submission is that that is an unfair example, because it is not the case that that is, A, likely, or B, at all, what is the outcome of, in a very exceptional circumstance such as this, the court of, this court accepting that 5230 should succeed.
But in principle, you can have that continuum of repeated attempts to reopen.
Yes.
The standard doesn't get any higher the further you go along that continuum. You can just carry on.
My lord, yes. And much as there, in any, and I need to be careful here, because I'm not drawing a parallel in terms of standard, but I am drawing a parallel in terms of appellants having a number of attempts at something. We, in our jurisprudence, accept that it is right and proper, if the circumstances permit it, that an applicant or an appellant can have a number of goes. That's because we have a High Court, we have a Court of Appeal, we have a Supreme Court, and in certain circumstances, we can go even further. And it is not right in principle to say that each time, in some kind of jurisprudential way, the standard gets higher. It's not right. Now, I entirely accept my lordship's point, which is this. If it's exceptional to do it first time under 5230, then indeed it will be very exceptional for the same error to give rise to the same standard a second time around. And it will be even more exceptional for it to happen endlessly, which is why I say my lordship's example is not really a fair one.
So what is the force of "vary" in that formulation?
What is the?
The force of "vary" in the concept of "very exceptional", which seems to be something even more exceptional than exceptional.
My lord, the only reason I say "vary" is because that the circumstances in which this might arise are rare. So the force of "vary" is rare, is the rarity element. And there is, in fact, some case law which assists me on this. If I can take the court to it, it's at tab 46 of the authorities. It's the case of Zibala.
Yes?
And just by way of introduction to this case, this was a case where there had been a 5230 application, and indeed the court then, well, maybe I'll take the court to the particular paragraph. So in the judgment at paragraph 21, the court deals in principle with the question of whether a second application for permission to reopen a decision under the criminal procedure rules or indeed 5230 exists. And the court said two things. First, it may exist in theory. So I take that as support for the submissions I've made about the wording and the fact that it is feasible for this application to be made twice. Second, the court emphasized that it was unaware of any case in which that had ever occurred. So that's my rarity point.
You're reading from paragraph?
So this is 21.
Yes, I'm looking at 21.
But Mr Jos QC and Mr Keith cannot point to any case in which it had ever been exercised.
And then the following sentence.
And yes, and then this is my lordship's, this is my lordship's point, and the third reason I come here. "Difficult to imagine circumstances in which it would be appropriate for the court to allow a second application."
And then?
Difficult, I'll get there, "difficult to imagine." Difficult to imagine, but not impossible. And that goes back to my first point. That this is a jurisdiction which is in principle open and which it must, in the right circumstances, be possible to exercise.
So it would be difficult to imagine an application such as yours succeeding?
Correct, but not impossible.
But not impossible.
And of course, 'difficult to imagine' is not setting some kind of jurisprudential standard that I have to meet. The Court is just saying, just as a matter of fact, it's difficult for the Court to imagine this circumstance.
Well, you can, in theory, imagine a situation in which an appeal was the subject of a permission application to reopen on the basis, for example, that the earlier decision was made per incuriam and that application failed. And then, a couple of years down the line, it emerged that there was very powerful evidence that the original judgment was obtained by fraud. Now, in that situation, you might theoretically have a chance to reopen on the fraud basis, but that example is one where there is a very different scenario because you've got a material change of circumstances and the grounds are different. Here, it's just a repetition on exactly the same grounds that were considered and refused by Lord Justice Lewis.
My lady, yes, two points arise in response to that. First, it's absolutely possible to conceptualize of an example such as your ladyship proposes, where the reason for the second reopening is a factual change, where there's fraud involved. It's possible for that type of factual scenario to exist. But in my submission, that is not the only type of case in which it is possible for the jurisdiction to be exercised twice. Nor is it necessary, as I sine qua non, in order for the jurisdiction to be exercised twice, for the grounds to be different. And I can make that submission good when I get to the next set of submissions I'm going to make on the CJ EU point and then why that gives rise to the particular exceptionality in this case.
So can I ask, in relation to the point made in paragraph 21, have you been able to find any cases in which a second application was successful?
My Lord, no.
So we are?
Oh, oh, my Lord, yes, apologies. My Lord, yes. In which a second application was considered but was not successful, the answer is yes.
No, 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 sorry, my question, I put it badly, I meant was successful.
Was successful, wasn't successful, was it? No, the answer is no. It was considered and the question was, the Court didn't say that it wasn't available as a process in order to be considered by the Court, but the Court didn't find that the bar was met.
Well, we're here doing the considering, so what's the case?
Yes. Ah, so if I can just...
Is it not in the 61 cases we've already got?
It's not, because it's not a case that's reported. It's a decision in which my instructing solicitor was involved, in a case called Hardy. And there, again, there was a dual request and the decision was made by the Court of Appeal to refuse, but not on the basis that it didn't have jurisdiction to consider the application twice, but only on the basis that the bar was not met.
Is there a report?
There isn't a report, but I have the...
A transcript?
The, no, I have the judge's order, I have the order of the Court of Appeal. That's the best evidence I could find, which I can hand up if it would assist.
Thank you.
So there, there was a point about changing the judgment between draft and finality.
Yes.
Point I've been considering last week, which is a very different sort of case.
Yes, of course.
And in real and all the rest of it.
Yes.
So that, yeah, okay.
Okay, a very different circumstance, but one, but an example. And in fact, an example which was referred to by my instructing solicitor when he wrote about this reapplication in this case. So, my Lord...
So the answer to my question is no, you haven't been able to find a case in which there's been a second reconsideration which was successful.
No, correct. But again, simply because something is rare, A does not mean it's impossible and B does not mean that this case is not that case.
No, it's the uniqueness now we're moving to.
Yes, I shall get to the uniqueness, but with two points just to refer to first. First, I need to answer my Lord Justice Limblom's reference to the final sentence in paragraph 21 of Goring.
Not of Goring?
I'm so sorry, of Zibala, of Zibala.
Yeah.
Where that sentence says, 'even first applications for permission to reopen are overwhelmingly without merit', see the notes, although there are some very rare examples of first applications succeeding. So and that's exactly the discussion that I've been having with the Court.
Yes, well, that's, in a sense, an answer to the question I originally asked you, which was, what was the force of the word 'vary' when you introduced it in front of the word 'exceptional', in answer to my previous question. We find that Lord Justice Bean uses the word 'even', 'even first applications to reopen are overwhelmingly without merit'.
Yeah.
And do you take from his language the implication at least that there is, in principle, potentially at least some elevated requirement for a supplementary attempt?
No, again, for the reasons canvassed.
So it's the same standard time after time?
And yes, although, again, the likelihood of that happening, the rarity of it, means that it's unlikely to occur. And my Lord, it has to be the case, partly because all the language about 'very exceptional', 'highly exceptional', 'even more exceptional', all of that language applies, as your lordship has pointed out, to an application under 5230 per se. All of that language of exigency applies to just making the first application.
So are you submitting to us instead that really one couldn't get a higher hurdle, conceptually, than the hurdle that's already there for a first implication?
It must be philosophically possible to posit one, but it is difficult.
This Court isn't in the business of philosophy.
Indeed.
It's in the business of justice.
Yes. And that's quite my point, which is that although it may well be, a counterfactual could be put together to say that there's a higher hurdle, this Court's point to me has been throughout that this is a very, very high standard. And I have accepted throughout that this is a very, very high standard. What I have not accepted is that it's an impossible standard ever to be met.
All right.
On the first time or on the second.
Thank you, shall we get on then?
My Lord, yes, I'm grateful. One further thing to say on this and then I'll move on to the CJ EU cases. And that is as follows. It must be remembered that part of the reason for the 5230 jurisdiction is that the Courts and indeed the jurisprudence of the Courts should not be led astray because of errors, here repeated errors, that reach the threshold of critically undermining the litigation process. And if that threshold is reached, the point is that 5230 operates essentially as a valve to release that pressure and to permit the Court to reconsider in a way that, as I've described, balances the need for certainty and finality against preventing injustice and protecting the litigation process.
So when you say jurisprudence not to be led astray, would you just develop that?
Yes, in that, I'm referring to the case law on 5230, which refers to the fact that if there's going to be a precedent which is created, as there would in our submission in this case, on points of European Union law, which we say justify a reference to the CJ EU and/or being told by their Act Claire against us. If there's going to be jurisprudence left intact as a result of the final decision, that shouldn't be so left intact, that's one of the elements that goes to the exercise of the 5230 rule, the jurisdiction under 5230. So it's ensuring that the Courts don't have or haven't made law that will then be applied because of, because in analogous cases, which should in fact have been reconsidered because the standard under 5230 is met. I hope that makes sense.
So the authority for that is?
We'll get the authority for that. I think it's in the, it's in the commentary to the rule. And I'll give my, your lordship, that authority in, when it's handed up to me. My Lord, if I may then move on to the second issue, the CJ EU case law on referral. And if we can begin, please, with the Sylphate case, which is tab 53 of the bundle. Sylphate, if the Court could turn to page 1302, just above the Advocate General's opinion is the question that was referred to the Court in Sylphate. And if I could just ask the Court to read the question rather than me reading it out. The judgment begins on page 1309. And there, the Court will see that the Sylphate case dealt with a dispute in relation to levies in respect of wool imported into Italy. And at the bottom of that page, in paragraph six, the Court starts to deal with what paragraph three of the relevant article, 177, means. And it provides that where a question of interpretation is raised in a case, pending before the Court or tribunal of a member state against whose decision there's no judicial remedy and a national law, the Court or tribunal shall bring the matter before the Court of Justice of the European Union. And paragraph seven deals with that obligation to refer and why that obligation exists. And the Court emphasizes or states that the obligation exists because it's based on cooperation established with a view to ensuring the proper application and uniform interpretation of community law in all member states between national courts in their capacity as courts responsible for the application of community law and the Court of Justice. And just standing back from that, it's important to recognize why the ability to refer and to ask to refer is given as a right to a litigant. And that is because it is only through that mechanism where there is nowhere else, there's no other remedy under national law, so the national law remedies are exhausted, there is no other way that a litigant can have ventilated the relevant EU point unless the Court considers whether to refer the matter to the CJ EU or whether it should be considered by national law.
But it isn't a right given to a litigant and this decision actually establishes that the contrary. You look at paragraph nine, it's quite clear that the CJ EU says it's not a means of redress available to the parties. The fact that a party says there's a question on the interpretation of community law isn't good enough.
Yes.
It's a matter for the National Court or Tribunal and the National Court or Tribunal has a discretion. That is why the word is 'may' not 'must'.
My lady, two things in that regard. First, absolutely, this case establishes and importantly establishes that the mere fact that a party can contend that there's a question that should be referred is not enough, obviously. Because one would just then say a question should be referred without there being any validity or any merit in the question. So that's the point in my submission that's being made by the Court in paragraph nine. It's, it's not, in my respectful submission, the point being made there that the parties don't have the right to trigger the process. What's being said there is that the mere fact that a question is raised is not enough.
The right to trigger the process means what? The right to ask the National Court to consider
Correct.
in its discretion
Correct.
whether to refer.
Correct.
Not a right to have referred. Correct or not?
My Lord...
The right to trigger the process was your formulation, what does that mean?
If I can, if I can just work through this judgment and then answer the question, I will. I will answer what that question means, but I think we need to see a little bit more what the judgment says before answering that question definitively.
Yes, well, do remind me to ask you again if I forget.
I will, I will. So paragraph 10 then deals with, again, what 177, Article 177, says. And emphasize that there's the discretion whether to refer the matter. And the last sentence is the one that is important. Courts or tribunals are not obliged to refer a question concerning interpretation before them if that question is not relevant. That is to say, the answer to that question, regardless of what it is, can in no way affect the outcome of the case. So they're not obliged to refer in that circumstance. And again, there's also no obligation to refer, and this is where we get Act Claire from, if the point that is being asked to be referred is clear. And we see this in paragraphs 13 and 14, where the point's been dealt with before. And then in paragraphs 16 and 17, 16 in particular is what I rely on. It must be so obvious as to leave no scope for any reasonable doubt as to the manner in which the question raised is to be resolved. But if the Court does come to the conclusion that that is the case, the National Court or Tribunal must be convinced that it is equally obvious. That, and when that is satisfied, then the National Tribunal may refrain from submitting the question.
Well, that's, that's an alternative. You get two possible situations catered for. One is that the issue that is raised, which is said to be a matter of interpretation of community law, is wholly irrelevant. Because regardless of any answer that the CJ EU may give to that question of interpretation, it won't make any difference to the outcome. For example, if the judge has decided, as a matter of discretion, to refuse the application on the grounds that the decision that would have been made would have been the same in any event. That's scenario one. And in those circumstances, if the court is of the view that the matter of interpretation won't help it, it is under no obligation to refer. The second scenario is where the court thinks that there is a genuine question of interpretation that could be relevant, but it's Act Claire because there's a whole line of authorities from the CJ EU that might what the proper answer to the question is.
Yes.
And it's very important in a case like this not to confuse the two, because the whole of this application is premised on the basis that Lord Justice Lewis should have said, if he thought it was the case, that it was Act Claire, whereas his view plainly was it was irrelevant, and that is a different ground for refusing to make a reference.
Didn't the court deal with this question at least partly in paragraph sixty-three of the judge, the leading judgment in Shirley, see tab forty-four?
My lord, if I may just reflect on the question just asked before going to Shirley. The reason that I pause is that it's, in my submission, it's not correct to allied the question of, of, the discretion question as, as my lady puts it, i.e. that no remedy should be provided as a matter of the court's exercise of discretion, even though there's there's an error of, it's not right to allied that with the first aspect under Sylfitt, which is that the determination of the question would not make any difference.
Why not? Because if, if a judge says, it doesn't matter what the outcome would be in relation to question A,
Yes.
because on the facts of this particular case, it doesn't make any impact on the result for the two parties.
Yes.
So it's a purely academic question. You don't refer purely academic questions to the CJ EU.
There's a circumstance in which it isn't purely academic, and that's our circumstance, which is that the, the question to be referred to the CJ EU touches upon whether discretion was correctly exercised. And that's why I say there's a difference. The two things don't, aren't allieded. So my lady's entirely correct that in circumstances where discretion is a complete answer and there is no attack that can be made on that discretion on the question to be referred to the CJ EU, they are one and the same, but in this case they are not. My lord, Lord Justice Lindblom, Shirley. At tab
Forty-four.
Forty-four.
Table sixty-three.
Table sixty-three.
In that case, the reasons are regarded as conjunctive rather than disjunctive. A, it's irrelevant, B, it's Act Claire in any event.
Yes. Yes. But in, in this case, my lord, Lord Justice Lindblom makes, makes these four points, and the second is an express Act Claire finding. So the difference with this, with the Shirley case and our case is that there is no express Act Claire finding.
But if in the Shirley case, my lord had stopped at his first reason, that would have been good enough.
If, yes, if that reason arises in the context of that case, but my submission is that the reason in the context of this case, that it's not the same.
Yeah.
What you're saying, I'm sorry, I wanted to be absolutely clear. You're submitting, are you, that the first of the four reasons given in paragraph sixty-three of the judgment in Shirley does not arise in the present case?
It doesn't arise
But the other, I think the other side suggests that it does. And that is, that is the submission that is made on the basis of the judge's conclusion that the same outcome was, I think I'm getting the word right, inevitable.
Yes. But my submission is it doesn't
I think the point, I think the point is raised by the other side in this case for you to address, isn't it?
Yes.
I think, I think the submission was that that particular finding by the judge is itself hinged upon the question of European community law which may infect it. That's, that's your submission, as I understand.
Yes. Correct.
It's a fairly bold submission, but no doubt you'll try to make it good.
Yes.
But the point is squarely an issue here. And you're going to tackle the, the submissions made on the other side. Are you in opening or are you going to wait until you've heard them reply? I think, I think it's a point on which the court would benefit from your submission.
Yes. My, my lord, yes. If I, if I may finish some of the setting out of the CJ EU
Of course, but were you intending, were you intending to deal with it?
But yes, I was hoping to deal with it.
Yes, but we'd like you to deal with it.
Yes, although I do have an eye on the time, but I was hoping
We do too, but we'd like you to make use of the time, at least by dealing with that.
Yes.
Please.
So the court was looking at Sylfitt in tab fifty-three. If we can look next in tab fifty-eight at Rezabek. This was a case before the European Court of Human Rights, because an Article six was , but in relation to how a CJ EU point had been dealt with. And if we can go in that decision, please, to paragraph thirty-four. Well, first maybe to paragraph twenty-two. Just to note that the court in this case, in the Rezabek case, refers to and notes what the CJ EU in Capfra said, and Capfra is our next destination.
Oh.
So just to, just to note that the court in Rezabek referred to what Capfra had said in relation to community law.
This was paragraph?
And this is paragraph twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Thank you.
Then in paragraph thirty-four, there the court deals with Sylfitt. And in my submission, this exposition of Sylfitt in thirty-four and over the page up until thirty-five is as, as good an exposition as one could get, and I rely on it. And my submissions are based on this understanding of Sylfitt, which I had, I hope I articulated, but if, if I didn't articulate it fully, this is what my submissions on Sylfitt are. Then if we can go on in the judgment to paragraph forty-four, this deals again with the Capfra question. It's forty-four on page one four oh nine at the top. This, the first full paragraph, which starts the government further observed. And there the court refers that there'd been reference to Capfra, that community law doesn't require a national court to refrain from applying domestic rules of procedure conferring the authority of raised judicata on a decision, even if this were necessary in order to prevent a breach of community law by the decision in question, but that there's a caveat in relation to the principles of equivalence and effectiveness. And I'll deal with that in some more detail when we look at Capfra next. And then finally, in this decision, I rely on paragraphs fifty-six to fifty-eight and sixty to sixty-two. And fifty-six to fifty-eight in my submission are particularly important. Because they articulate the obligation on the referring court, i.e. the obligation on the court to exercise its discretion, if I can put it like that, to refer in this way, that there is an obligation when considering the question to bring the matter before the court, but that is not absolute, and Sylfitt makes it clear that there are times when that obligation, i.e. the discretion, can be exercised against the reference being made and irrelevance and Act Claire are referred to. Then at paragraph fifty-eight, the second paragraph under paragraph fifty-eight, about the particular significance of Article six-one and everybody being entitled to a hearing in accordance with the correct law. And the court says this, this aspect takes on particular significance in the jurisdictional context of the European Union. The purpose of implementing the third paragraph of the treaty is, as the Court of Justice has pointed out, to ensure the proper application and uniform interpretation of community law, and more particularly to prevent the occurrence within the community of divergences. So again, that emphasizes why it's important for the exercise, the referral exercise to be considered. And then sixty and sixty-two are where this court imposes a situation, so the Human Rights Court imposes an obligation to give reasons. And I rely on paragraph sixty and sixty-two in particular for the submission that, in these circumstances, where a court is asked to exercise its determination as to whether to refer a question to the CJ EU or whether in its discretion it should not be referred, there is an obligation to give reasons as to why the particular outcome is reached.
Well, no, it's, it's, it's not so much the reasons for the refusal. What's said in sixty-two is the reasons why they found the questions irrelevant or that the provision has been already interpreted or it's Act Claire. So provided that the decision says, I don't consider that any question of European community law arises in this case, it's completely irrelevant because, for example, it's, it makes no difference to the outcome, that's good enough.
My lady, no.
No?
On this, some explanation has to be given as to why it's good enough.
So you've got to give reasons for the reasons. It's not, it's not good enough for the judge to say this is irrelevant. The judge has got to say it's, it's irrelevant because, and then go into a long spiel about that.
Not necessarily a long spiel, but a sufficient explanation for it to be understood why the judge came to that conclusion.
So to say, I consider it's irrelevant because the judge in the court below has already decided, as a matter of judicial discretion, that it makes no difference. That's not good enough in your submission.
In this case, it may be in some cases,
Right.
but in this case, no, because of the nature of the questions that sought to be referred and how they interacted with why the discretion was exercised.
What's the authority for that proposition?
This is the authority for that proposition. Oh, so, I'm so sorry.
For your last proposition?
The, the, the nature of discretion.
The nature of the decision, I think you said.
My lord, I think we're at cross purposes.
Well, maybe we are, I don't know.
I'm not entirely certain what
If we are, I'm sure it's my fault. What I'm seeking to get at is really the point that my lady was seeking to pursue with you, which is why it wasn't good enough to do as the judge did and then the Lord Justice did in the circumstances of the present case. And I thought you were saying that it was the nature of something, either the decision or the subject matter or the context, I'm not quite saying to which.
It's because of the, so it's because the questions that are sought to be referred to the CJ EU are questions that go fundamentally to whether discretion was properly exercised or not.
Right, and that's the question on which I was inviting you to indicate an irrelevant authority.
Ah, I see. So you're asking me, is there authority which says that this, that what I've just articulated is the correct approach to this limb?
In principle.
Under CJ EU?
In principle.
I don't know of any such authority. That doesn't mean the proposition isn't correct, though. It's arisen in, as a result of the circumstances in this case.
But there's no European authority, you pointed out, for that proposition?
No, there's no European authority.
That's, that's a very clear answer to the question.
Yes, although there may, it is not necessarily
Well, I used to submitting to us, you're not aware of any, or that there isn't any.
I'm, well, I'm totally submitting I'm not aware of any, and I think if, if there were, then those instructing you would be aware. So I'm saying there's none.
But you're not aware of any authority for the proposition. That, that's a perfectly clear and helpful answer. Thank you.
But I'm still struggling to understand what it is you say the judge should have said for its obligations because of this particular wrinkle, that on your, your, your client's analysis of the case, rightly or wrongly, Mrs. Justice Lang's approach to Hoplins, which is it would all, the same decision would have been reached, which is a finding of fact.
And law.
Well, it's a mixed question of fact and law.
Mixed question.
But the same decision would have been reached in any event.
Yes.
Or what should the Lord Justice have said in order to fulfill what you say is the special requirement for reasons in a case such as this?
Right. My lady, let me divert, because this is clearly of concern to the court, and I have an eye on the time. I need, I, I do, though, need to go back to Capfra and interfact because they're, they are cited against me, and I need to deal with them. But if I could just deal with this point now. If your ladyship takes up the reopening bundle in Hoplins at tab two. My, my apologies, at tab one. Your ladyship will see the, the reasons that are given for why the application, this application has been made. And on pages, I've got it as E seven, I'm just going to go with the E, with the E numbers. On page E seven, the point is made that the partial habitats assessment point wasn't dealt with. And the all options on the table point wasn't dealt with, and again, the completeness of the purported HRA was, wasn't dealt with. And the reason that those points are important is that the question of whether a partial HRA is something that is permissible in light of the CJ EU law, the question of whether a remedial HRA is permissible if all options aren't on the table, and the question of the standard for a court to examine whether a habitats assessment has met what I'm just going to call for shorthand the Dutch nitrate, so the Switzerland standard. Those three questions were part of the questions that were referred or that was asked to be referred to the CJ EU. And one sees that in short form on page E three. And one sees that in short form on page E thirty-four in tab two. Those three questions all go crucial to whether the discretion, Mrs. Justice Lang's discretion in the Hopland's case, was properly exercised. Because, put very colloquially and at a high level, the reason that Mrs. Justice Lang said that there wouldn't be a decision that would be any different is because she took into account the partial HRA that had been undertaken. She took into account the information that was provided in that HRA. And the submission, the question of law that is put, is that in circumstances where there is only a partial HRA and where that HRA that was undertaken didn't come to the relevant or didn't address matters to the relevant standard, whether discretion was properly exercised is absolutely tied in with the CJEU referral question.
Although that wasn't put to Mrs. Justice Lang, that's the CJEU referral points, in the way that they now arise, arose in the application for permission to appeal.
Correct.
So this, so, I mean, again, it's another feature of reconsideration. We are reconsidering something, you're asking us to reconsider something, which effectively, when you go back, wasn't even raised with the judge.
But the points were raised. The reference point doesn't have to be raised at first.
That's not good enough now because of the importance of the questions to the CJEU that you raised. So we are faced with a situation in which what you say is so fundamental wasn't even addressed to the judge.
My lord, that's just not right, if I may say so, for these reasons. The points that are the basis for the reference to the CJEU, all those points were absolutely squarely before the judge. And the question before the High Court was, are those points any good or not? What is the answer to those points? And my, the submission that was made by the claimant in the case was, those are, those are good points and they are, they should give rise to a successful judicial review.
We have the skeleton argument, don't we?
We do. But if I may just finish my thought.
I'm sorry, yes.
So that's what was said at the High Court. It's absolutely not the case that at the High Court level it was necessary also for the next step to be said, which is, oh, and by the way, if you're entirely against us on absolutely everything, we'd like a reference to the CJEU, partly because it's not the right approach at the High Court level, and secondly, because that arises much more properly on appeal.
Yes, so, so that's the answer. Not that I, with respect, was wrong, those points weren't raised. You say that was legitimate to do with it in the way that you did.
Partly, the reason that I said, my lord, that you were wrong was partly for that reason and partly for this reason. The CJEU questions were raised on appeal, were, in my submission, rightly raised on appeal, and they could be raised on appeal. But then they were raised, and the Court of Appeal, in making its decision on permission, had to deal with those points in the way that the CJEU case law, to which I'll return, requires.
That's the debate.
Correct. Well, yes, but that's exactly the point, and that's why, my lord, I suggested that your lordship was wrong. Because when, when we're now here, we're dealing with an instance where the points were firmly before the court, were articulated before the court, and it's, and should have been dealt with by the court, but were not.
And when, in that submission, the Court is, or Justice Lewis.
Correct.
Yes. So it is a point as to whether, in fact, that was legitimately part of the appeal in any event. I mean, because you're aware, there's a big debate about the ever-changing nature of the applicant's arguments in this case, as is all too regrettable in these sorts of disputes.
My lord, I'm aware it's said against me, but in my submission, it's not rightly said against me.
All right, so there's a debate about that.
There is a debate about that. And the points, the EU points, if I can put it like this, the substantive points about what EU law says is correct or isn't correct in relation to habitats and is correct and isn't correct in relation to EIA and HRA in Chislet, those points have been stated and have been the points throughout. The only thing that has changed in, because of the nature of the fifty-two thirty application, is the focus on what your lordship said right at the very beginning was the CJEU point.
Yeah.
That's the, the focus has necessarily had to change because the nature of the application is different.
Okay, I understand that.
May I now take us to the skeleton argument or invite you to take it there?
Yes, of course.
Is that all right?
Of course.
Is it at tab five, at least in the red folder?
So is it the skeleton?
I think it's, I think it's a joint skeleton argument, isn't it? I'm sorry?
We should definitely be in, well, my folders, all the blue folders are Hopland's.
Well, I'm sorry, I've, I've found Claimant's skeleton argument for Chislet's and Hopland's cases.
Ah, they might be the same.
Which I suspect may be the same.
Yes.
And it happens to be in front of me in the red folder, at tab five. But if that's the wrong place to look, please tell me.
No, no, I think, I think your lordship is correct in that the...
And I think we may be...
The skeletons were the same.
Yes, forgive me. I think we may be looking at paragraphs one hundred and five and one hundred and six, but tell me if I'm wrong. Page G one hundred and four.
Yes, so CJEU reference.
Is that the right place to be looking?
In, in relation to the CJEU reference point?
Yes.
Yes.
It is. It is the right, it's the right place to look, to see how the case was put in the court
In the high, in the...
At first instance.
Yes, in the first instance court, correct.
Yes. So that's how the point originated. Is that right?
That's the way it was put, that's the way it was put in the skeleton at first instance.
The way it was put in front of the judge at first instance, from whom there was then an application for permission to appeal, which was refused by the Lord Justice. So that's the way in which the case was argued in the court below.
Yes, that's the way in which it was articulated at the very outset, there might be a CJEU reference point. But that doesn't, that, with respect, that doesn't address the point that I was discussing with my Lord Justice Coulson, which is whether...
Well, maybe it doesn't.
It's correct or, or, or open to the, the, the claimant, then appellate, to raise a different point.
All I'm doing, it's very unambitious, mister, is simply identifying the point that was taken in the court below.
My lord, yes.
With your help, I think I've managed to do that, have I?
Yes.
Thank you.
My lords, my lady, if I might return, however briefly.
When are you going to take us to Capra?
To Capra.
Seems like a good place to go.
Yes. As, as Capra is opened at tab fifty-four, I'm reminded rightly of course that the point on discretion arises only in the Hopland's matter and not in the Chislet matter.
Thank you.
Capra then at tab fifty-four. And this was a case which dealt in specifically with the question of raised judicata, and it's, it's a case that is relied on by my lord's friends against me. If we can begin in Capra, please, in the judgment which, and in the judgment at paragraph thirteen on page one through three, four, just to understand how the point arises. So Capra was a case where there was a consumer point, and the company in the case raised the question about whether the court had... The court that was dealing with this consumer complaint said it did have jurisdiction and made its decision accordingly, but made its decision in favour of the company. The consumer brought the appeal, and the company didn't challenge the jurisdiction question because they had, the other questions had gone in its favour. So this is how the question of raised judicata arises. So paragraph seventeen then, nonetheless, the court, to which, the court that was hearing the appeal, questioned whether it should of its own motion, under its obligations in European community law, consider whether it should set aside a final and conclusive judgment because of the rigors of community law. So it's different from our case in the sense that the court was considering of its own motion whether it should be seeking to set aside a final decision. Paragraphs nineteen to twenty-three are then the key paragraphs on which I rely. And there the court emphasizes that the referring court was asking whether, because of the principles of cooperation, an obligation to review and set aside the final decision arose. And I note just, I pause there and note that the key principle we're dealing with there is the principle of cooperation, not the principle of effectiveness, and that's important later on. Then in paragraph twenty, the, well, if I can ask the court just to read paragraphs twenty, twenty-one, and twenty, two and twenty-three.
Yes?
Thank you. So the key points in Capra, in my submission, are these. That there's no obligation arising from EU law to set aside final decisions. The court is empowered to do so and can do so, but there's no obligation to do so. However, there's, the question arises about whether, in light of the principle of equivalence and the principle of effectiveness, we see those in paragraph twenty-two, that those principles do require the consideration to be given whether to reopen a final decision. So there's one thing in particular that I take from Capra, but that is dealt with in Interfact, and I'll deal with it when it's, it's addressed there. It is a difference between the Capra case and our case that what this applicant is asking this court to do is to exercise a jurisdiction for which provision is made in our own rules for the reasons articulated at the outset of my submissions. The court in Capra was asking itself whether it had an obligation to reopen a final decision, a kind of freestanding obligation, even though the rules didn't allow for that. And we're in a very different position. And all, I say all, but what this applicant is asking this court to do is apply the domestic rules on raised judicata and reopening final decisions. Finally, I turn to Interfact, and that's at tab fifty-two.
Yes?
The Interfact case dealt with two cases that came together and actually addresses the predecessor version of fifty-two thirty, which is fifty-two seventeen. And the court will see that in paragraph five of the decision on page one, two, seventy-two to one, two, seventy-three. So reliance was placed on the predecessor provision. And the Capra principle is dealt with from paragraphs forty-one onwards. And in the middle of forty-one, you'll see that the Capra principle is articulated, as I just mentioned, in the context of the court asking whether it was of its own motion bound to take the EU point and to reopen the jurisdiction, the, the final decision. So paragraph forty-four, the general principle is not that a final decision has to be reopened. Paragraph forty-four makes that absolutely plain, rely not just on Capra, but on other decisions of the CJEU. Even if a failure to reopen would make it impossible to remedy the infringement. However, paragraph fifty-one makes it clear that there are two overriding requirements which have to be considered. And those two overriding requirements are the principles of equivalence and the principles of effectiveness. And it is the principle of effectiveness on which I rely in this case. That is dealt with in paragraphs fifty-four to fifty-six. If I can ask the court to read fifty-four.
Yes?
So then the court says in fifty-five and fifty-six, there are two things that we have to be thinking about, put colloquially. First, what's EU law right that's been infringed? And in this case, we've articulated in relation to this fifty-two thirty application that the requirement was for the, the reference to be addressed on the basis of Sylfet, Rezebek, and this case, which looks at the principle of effectiveness. And then paragraph fifty-six was the point taken, and my submission is that the point was clearly taken at the appropriate junction.
I don't, at the moment, understand your argument as to how the principle of effectiveness has anything to do with it. With respect. How do you put it that the principle of effectiveness is engaged?
In this way. So the, the whole point of the principle of effectiveness is set out in, in this case is to ensure that the national courts must ensure the application of the principles, to ensure legal protection for individuals.
Individuals, yes.
Correct. And so, my lady, is entirely correct that the individual sits essentially at the bottom, and then the national court has to ensure that the individual's rights are respected.
So which rights are we dealing with here?
And the individual's rights include, in my submission, the rights that arise in relation to environmental protection from habitats assessment and environmental impact assessment. Now, my lady's going to ask, how on earth are those individual rights? And they're individual rights in this way. Because the, the reason that the habitats regime and the environmental impact assessment regime is put together in the way that it is, is to allow for public participation in the decision-making process where there are, there's a potential for environmental impact to occur. And then furthermore, to allow individuals to say that the habitats process or the environmental impact assessment process has not properly been complied with.
Which they have. Individuals have a right to object stage, which your client didn't, to seek to quash the planning permission, which in Hopland's she didn't, to come to court and seek to quash later permissions, which and had it ventilated fully before the court. Then the court to give permission to appeal, have the merits looked at again, and then ask this court to give permission to appeal. I can't, at the moment, see how the principle of effectiveness has, has anything to do with it. She, she's had every right to ask the court to apply those principles of law, and the court has given access to her.
In my submission, the princip- In my submission, the principle of effectiveness is undermined, whereas in this case the appellant, when she was the appellant, clearly articulated points of, to be referred to the CJEU. And the answer that came back from the court in its decision did not either make the reference and why the reference should not be made.
It becomes a circular argument, doesn't it? You say, because we're, your argument is, well, we're right that Lord Justice Lewison didn't properly address his mind to it. And because we're right about that, the principle of effectiveness is engaged. It becomes a completely circular argument.
My lady, it's not circular because of the nature of the particular rights that we're dealing with here.
To my lady's formulation of the public participation opportunity, if you will, in this case, I think it's right, is it that the claimant, as she then was, had protective costs order in her favor? Is that right?
Yes, I think that's correct.
In accordance with our whose principles in the rules?
I, I think that's right.
Well, I'm only looking at the order that Mrs. Justice Lang made, which, which I think suggests that
Yes.
Paragraph four of the order, although I'm not sure that we've got the protective costs order in our papers. So in the normal way, the now applicant had had her position in costs protected.
Yes.
Which is an aspect, of course, of aspect of access to justice.
Correct. Simply because there was, the principle of effectiveness was complied with earlier does not, in my submission, lessen the force of the submission that the principle of effectiveness is engaged at this stage. So whereas she was able to access the High Court and she was able to articulate her case at the High Court, it is part of the principle of effectiveness that she be allowed to appeal and that any points that are raised, which are points to be referred to the CJEU must be dealt with in the correct way. And if they are not dealt with in the correct way, then at that stage, the principle of effectiveness is not engaged with and is not complied with.
And that's the heart of it. That's where we started and that's where
And that's exactly where we've ended.
An hour and however long we've backed it. It's the questions and you say, what makes this case different is that they weren't dealt with in the correct way. In other words, you say, they should have either been answered or there should have been reasons. And your point about the discretion goes back to, well, you say that was the answer that effectively had to be given. Either an answer to the questions, sorry, either a referral of the questions or a full explanation as to effectively why no, no referral.
A sufficiently full explanation for the, the, the decision that was being made.
So in fact, in one sense, it's a reasons challenge.
Yeah. It's only because of the, and this is why we've trudged through the case law, because it, it's not just a reasons challenge. This is a reasons challenge, which is based on the the European Court of Human Rights saying that it's a crucial part of the CJEU process.
No, it's not. It's fifty-two thirty.
Yes, correct.
That, that's the ultimate point. Did you have an answer to the, because I think it's relevant and I saw your learned junior
Yes.
Bring you the White.
Yes. To the precedent question.
Well, yes, because it seems to me, you speaking for myself, that that's relevant actually to the submission that you're now, that you've just developed.
Yes. So in this version of the White Book, which is, is last year's version, but I think is the same in this year's version.
Last year's?
Yes, twenty.
You must buy it every year. I'm one of the editors. You must. You must buy it every year.
My lord, I have it this year. We just don't, all of us have it this year.
I see. All right. Well, I, I'm.
Times are hard at the bar.
I was going to say, I understand the financial constraints.
Yeah, especially at this time.
I don't, I don't earn very much money for having my name on the spine. Yes, so it's in the notes to five, fifty-two thirty.
Fifty-two thirty. In fact, indeed, it's in the first paragraph to fifty-two thirty, where the, where the notes are dealing with the rule in Taylor and Lawrence. And it said there, in judgment in Taylor and Lawrence, Court of Appeal said that there are two objectives, A to correct wrong decisions and B to clarify and develop the law and set precedents. And then in order to achieve those dual objectives, the appellate court has the implicit power to do what is necessary and that gave rise to the jurisdiction.
So that goes back to Taylor and Lawrence and their general statement. Because of course then, there was no fifty-three twenty.
Correct.
Sorry, fifty-two thirty.
Yes.
So, so it's not a fifty-two thirty point, it's a Taylor and Lawrence point.
Yes, well, it's, it's the case that gave rise to fifty-two thirty, if I can put it colloquially in that way.
It, it, it gave rise to it so as to ensure that the rules dealt with the reconsideration point.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes. My lord, I have an eye on the time in that it's close to twelve-thirty. If I might articulate the rest of my case in the next ten minutes and then check with the court whether that, that's been dealt with acceptably. My lord, you, you flagged to me the discretion point and that then was discussed with my lady. Has that been dealt with sufficiently now for, for me to wait to reply to say anything else?
We're, we're content. Thank you.
I'm very grateful indeed. So to put things very quickly, let's begin with Hopland's, which is where the discretion point arises. And can we go please to the grounds of appeal? They're in the core bundle on page fourteen, E fourteen. So the grounds of appeal, just to put it in, in the most summary fashion, say this. First of all, ground one, that essentially there's a partial habitats assessment that's been carried out because it only deals with part of the site, not the whole of the site.
Sorry, I missed a page reference. It's entirely my fault.
E fourteen, in the core bundle.
When you say core, you mean the reapplication?
No, it's the Not the reapplication bundle.
The appeal.
The appeal, the core appeal bundle. The ground, the grounds didn't make it into the reapplication. Apologies. And it's easier now, given the time for me to go to the grounds than the skeleton, which is, is longer as one can imagine.
Yep.
So the grounds, ground one is essentially raising the, the partial HRA question. That given that the HRA at reserve matters stage was only to deal with the part of the site rather than the whole of the site, it couldn't possibly comply with the obligations at EU's, in the EU cases, their vantage, sweetening, et cetera. The second ground was that even if it's possible for there to be some kind of remedial HRA, then for the reason set out on page E fifteen, there's, there were errors and the key flaw in this regard is that essentially things were not dealt with as though at the original stage. So things weren't dealt with in a way that everything was on the table. And in that regard, there was reference in particular to regulation seventy-three, seventy brackets three. And the court will see that on page E sixteen, little d. Then ground four deals with discretion. And there in particular, ground four builds on and relies on ground one. And you see that explicitly in paragraphs twelve and thirteen, but paragraph twelve in particular. So there's the link between the EU error and discretion. So those, those were the grounds. In the, in the reopening, in the reopening bundle then.
The grounds are, are saying that the court had no evidence on which to exercise her discretion, not that she earned in law.
The grounds also say that there was no evidence. But the, the, the error is not just that there's no evidence, the error is that the discretion was, apologies, while I find where I was.
What it says is that the judge earned in law in relying on discretion, and then there's some reference to Champion, which is not, as I understand, challenged. And then it says the court simply had no evidence that the decision would inevitably have been the same. It's an evidence challenge, not a legal challenge to the basis on which that discretion was exercised as a matter of European law. The only reference to European law is Champion.
No, so it, it, the first sentence with respect to paragraph twelve, in any event, if the defendant had directed itself properly, a partial HRA clearly could not take place, see ground one above. So there's two points being made with respect to that paragraph. First, discretion relies on something that should not have taken place as a result of EU law, see ground one. And in any event, there was no evidence.
The assertion is, in the second sentence of paragraph twelve, thus, the same decision would not have been reached. And that was squarely rejected by the judge in the exercise of her discretion. Is, is that, do you submit a criticism of the manner of the exercise of the discretion, such as to make it available on appeal as a point that can be taken, or not?
My lord, the way I understand the second sentence is exactly supporting my submission in relation to the first. That the, 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 the legal error about permitting a partial HRA and that not being a creature permissible under EU law thus infects the decision, the same decision couldn't possibly have been reached.
Well, you're saying it was an irrational exercise of discretion.
It was an exercise of discretion that was, that, that was tinged by error of law. So discretion is always, as my lady recognized, a question, a mixed question of fact and law. So is there evidence on which to exercise discretion and should the discretion be exercised as a matter of law? And as a matter of law in this case, because of this point, the discretion should not have been exercised.
Yes, but we're looking at it through the prism of an application for permission to appeal to the appellate court.
Yes.
What are the principles on which such permission to challenge a first instance judge's exercise of discretion will be granted?
Yes.
What are the principles?
If, in my submission, and I don't have authority before your lordship asks, but in my submission they are these. If, because discretion is a question, a mixed question of fact and law, if there's an error of law that contributes to the reason, to the, to discretion being exercised, then it is open to an appellant to challenge the exercise of discretion on the basis of that error of law.
Yeah, it can, it can be said that it's, 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 either, either the discretion is not within the reasonable bounds or it was tainted by an error of law.
Yes.
Because the error of law infected, if you like, the reasoning in the exercise of the discretion. But forgive me, I'm not sure that is how it is put in your repellent's notice.
My question was going to be precisely that. How is it articulated in, in, in an available way in the grounds of appeal?
My submission is it's articulated in paragraph twelve, in the two sentences just read out. And it is also articulated in the skeleton, to which I can give reference anon.
Well, the skeleton isn't part of your grounds of appeal. It's got to be in the grounds of appeal.
But it is in the ground of appeal. It's, it's in my submission squarely in the ground of appeal. Now, it's right.
In which fit?
Sorry, paragraph twelve, I think.
Paragraph twelve, the first and second sentences of paragraph twelve.
So it's first, this first, first and second sentences.
Yes. Now, it's right that in the crucible of scrutiny by this court, I have articulated the point differently and lightly, clearly, more clearly. But it is absolutely the case that this ground of appeal was articulated and in my submission was articulated so as to be understandable as I have just described it. I.e. there's an error of law which infects the exercise of discretion. And it is because discretion is based on a partial HRA, which cannot as a, as a question of EU law be a thing, be, be, be correct.
The, the difference there is of course that this is an application to reconsider.
Yes.
And it's the material that was available before Lord Justice Lewison that therefore matters.
Yes, so, and apologies, I keep trying to take things step by step and, and it taking too long. These were the grounds of appeal.
We keep raising questions which we think are of fundamental importance
Yes.
to this application, which is inviting us to make new law.
Yes.
So we, you'll have to forgive us.
No, not at all. I didn't mean to.
Trying to tease out
Yes.
some of the points.
See, the thing is that it, it may be that you have articulated the matter slightly more clearly or more eloquently, if I may say so, with respect. But in order to challenge the Lord Justice's approach to it, surely it has to be established that it was so blindingly obvious that the challenge to the judge's exercise of discretion was on an error of law basis, that no law justice reading it could possibly have missed the point. And speaking for myself, I, I find that a bar, that's one stage too far.
My submission is because of, not just of this, but because of what the skeleton then said in support of the permission for, for, permission, the application for permission to appeal. And then because of what was said later in the application to reopen, that the point has been made not just here but in a number of different places. And in my submission, has been made in those places sufficiently clearly. And just to, to make it also clear that discretion arises in, in this aspect of the challenge but not in the other. So in my submission, across all those documents, the point is made blindingly clearly. So the skeleton, the permission to appeal skeleton is in tab two of the reopening bundle.
You'll find the relevant paragraphs of forty-six and forty-seven.
And yes, forty-six and forty-seven, discretion was, was raised in those in those paragraphs. Correct.
But the point I think that you're focusing on is somewhat laconically dealt with in paragraph forty-eight.
Yes. It's short. I, I perhaps wouldn't go quite so far as to say it's laconically short, but it is, it's short and the point is clear. And the, the point is clear because of the interlink with ground one, my lady.
And ground five?
Yes.
We've got a lot of complaints about the content of the HRA and about the fact that it, it was castigated as being partial.
Yes, so those two things are slightly different points, if I just maybe say one sentence about this. The question of whether it's even feasible to conduct a partial HRA is a different question and derives from different authorities than the, the question about the standard to which an HRA or the way in which an HRA must be considered by the courts. That, that relates to different later case law in Dutch nitrogen. So that's, that's the skeleton. Then Lord Justice Lewison makes his first order, that's at tab four. Sorry, tab three of the reopening bundle.
It's the other bundle, isn't it?
It's the other bundle.
It's the reopening bundle.
It's the back of tab three, forty three.
Forty three. It doesn't, in my submission, mention partial HRA. It does mention discretion. Where there's a reference in paragraph three of the order to discretion and the finding that the decision would inevitably have been the same. Of course, this paragraph is dealing with whether the correct test was applied in some ways. But the.
I know, he, it, all that Lord Justice Lewison is saying is that all that was needed was a highly likely test, and in fact, the judge found it was inevitable, so it more than passed it.
Yes, although that's against the background of reliance on champion, which is not a highly likely standard, it's a, it's a, it's a more, it's, it's an inevitability standard, which is why in my submission that's referred to there.
So it was appropriate to focus on inevitability, as he did?
That was one element on, on, on which obviously it, uh, it was required, uh, something was required to be said, but it wasn't the only aspect. And in particular, there is no reference at all in this order to the request for a reference, the questions that are sought to be referred, or why the reference has been refused. And it is at least correct in my submission to say this. There's nothing in paragraph three dealing with discretion that suggests that that paragraph was at all related to Lord Justice Lewison refusing to refer questions to the CJEU.
What about paragraph two? The court has a discretion not to quash a decision where the substance of the EU obligation has been complied with, the judge so found. It's inherent in that, that, that Lord Justice Lewison is saying, that was the be all and end all of the case. It doesn't matter what the, um, uh, position is in relation to partial or otherwise HA's, uh, HRA's, um, because the judge has found that the substance, uh, as a fact, that substance of the EU obligation's been carried up. So he's essentially saying, I'm not referring it because it's irrelevant. And the same is true with the discretionary point.
My lady, in my submission, it's paragraph two. It certainly doesn't obviously engage with the partial HRA point, which is never mentioned i- i- in any of the paragraphs.
No, but there's no obligation, uh, on a judge refusing permission to appeal to go through every single point that's been raised by a potential appellant. The duty to give reasons is enough to, it has to be enough to show why it is that it falls within one of the three categories that would enable the court not to, to refer it. And it's plainly being said here, the point makes no difference to the outcome, both in terms of paragraph two and in terms of paragraph three.
My lady, as you'll be aware, and I, I draw on, but don't apply in these circumstances, but I draw on the principles in relation to, to, to reasons. Where, if I could put it in this term, where there's a principle controversial issue, and ground one is wholly about the partial HRA, and then the discretion ground, ground four, relies on ground one in relation to the partial HRA. In those circumstances, um, the paragraph two and three are, in my submission, not dealing with that, they deal with something else, that they, they, they don't address themselves to that point, they don't deal with the partial HRA point at all, they don't refer to the authorities on partial HRA, although they refer to other authorities. And, and those paragraphs are very different from the way Lord Justice Lewison deals with other elements. For example, paragraph one, which deals with people over wind. Um, it, it's, it's in my submission striking, or the difference between the way in which those matters are dealt with, and the way in which the matters I say haven't been dealt with aren't. My lady, then the application is made, um, the further application is made under, the, the application's made under fifty two thirty. And that's in tab four at E forty five. And that application goes, in my submission, a step further, i.e. in making matters absolutely clear, this application goes a step further than the documents to which we've just had reference. Because it sets out what the questions might be that should be referred. And those are at E fifty five and fifty six. And then the test, or the, the obligation, as reflected in, uh, the EU case law to which we've referred this morning, is articulated in my submission at paragraph twenty one.
Which is wrong, because it's completely contrary to the authorities you were addressing this morning. It suggests that the only reason you can refuse to, to, uh, refer is act clair, and we now know that there are three, including irrelevance. And irrelevance isn't even addressed in this document.
My lady, no, irrelevance isn't addressed in this document, and in my submission, because it's clear that all the EU points were key to the, were key to how the judge determined the.
No, sorry, paragraph twenty one, read it. The only basis on which the Court of Appeal can lawfully not refer the matter, or not grant permission, would be if it can explain why it is certain that the answer is yes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That is not right. That is a misstatement of European law.
My lady, I don't go that far, and it's for this reason. It's, I, it's certainly right that it is the only reason if the, if the court can say yes, because either there's act clair, or there's, or the, or the other reasons, it's irrelevant, it's not going to make a difference, there's, there's act clair, there's, there's EU authority against the point.
True, but the whole of paragraph twenty one's about act clair.
That first sentence, my lady, in my submission, isn't just about act clair, and I think it would be wrong to interpret it. Finally, I'm at E eighty seven, is the order that was made in response to this application. And two things. Again, the question of CJEU referral is not dealt with explicitly. If it's dealt with implicitly, that is, as I understand what's now said, could, or that's, that's, as I understand, the position, um, the implicit dealing with it must be paragraph four. But again, paragraph four doesn't deal with the key law, error of law aspect of discretion, which was the partial HRA point, to put it very simply. So again, on the face of the, of the decision, at least two of the key aspects aren't dealt with.
Paragraph three is dealing with the partial HRA case, isn't it?
Yeah, so paragraph three does deal with the proposition in relation to partial HRA, but only by reference to regulation sixty three five. And of course, what the, the basis for the application for permission to appeal was not just sixty three five, but also seventy, which makes it absolute, which makes it absolutely clear. And in fact, paragraph seventy and how it operates and, and why it was relevant, not just sixty three five, but seventy, was set out in the application to re, to reopen.
So the judge was answering the right point? It's not a case of him picking up the wrong papers?
Well, no.
So he got it wrong, you say?
But picking up the wrong papers, as I submitted right at the outset, it would be very wrong in my submission to set the standard or the bar under fifty two, uh, un- under, under fifty two thirty at the level of one of the examples which is given.
I understand that, but we've agreed that that doesn't arise here, because the judge looked at the right papers, he's answering the questions.
Yes.
But you say, well, he dealt with, uh, regulation sixty three, but he didn't deal with the other way in which it was put.
My lord, yes, that's not the only thing.
So it comes down to partly reasons and partly the judge got it wrong.
But my lord, it was always partly reasons and partly the judge got it wrong.
I know.
Yeah, but that's not good enough.
That's not good enough.
But it's within the.
Fifty two thirty.
My lord, yes, but it's within the context of the CJEU jurisprudence, where it's, it's not just about, um, it's, it's, it's not just a normal question of reasons, or a normal question of has the judge got it wrong. Because of the CJEU jurisprudence to which the court was, um, attention was drawn, this is the position. There's a certain level of reasons that have to be given, and that's what one gets from the, the, the European Court of Human Rights case. There is a discretion in relation to referring a question to the CJEU. But that discretion, um, in my submission, has to be shaped on the basis of the, of the Sylphic case. And the, the basis on which that discretion is exercisable are the grounds that we've been covering, it's irrelevant, there's case law against it, or it's act clair. And it's, it's for those reasons, it's, it's not just the, uh, this applicant saying that the judge got it wrong. It's this applicant is saying that the judge got it wrong against that background of the CJEU material and requirements. And the reason that we went and looked at the case law in some detail was in order for those requirements properly to be understood. My lord, if I can turn to Chislett, and Chislett is not a case in which the discretion point arises.
Yes?
If we can just be within the reopening bundle, which will make life simpler, rather than going first to the core bundle. If one looks at the skeleton argument at tab two. The reference to the CJEU is at the very end, paragraph seventy, in my submission, clearly articulated. The appeal points in this case, if I can put them simply, are that, um, there's a point on which there isn't, um, obvious or clear authority about the intersection between habitats and EIA. And where those, where that intersection arises in a case such as this. Where it submitted that an in combination assessment must lead to, or, or arguably, for our purposes, leads to a position where the question has to be considered as a single project.
But that point wasn't articulated before the judge. The case before the judge was very plain, this should have been treated as one project, it should have been assessed as one project.
Yes.
And she rejected that. And she found that the council, not only rightly and lawfully found that they were two separate projects, but rightly and lawfully, in accordance with CJEU law, um, determined their cumulative impact each upon the other and collectively, and, and reached a, a determination that it was lawfully entitled to reach. You can't come along on appeal and then say, well, there's also a very interesting point about the, um, possibility that even though they are distinct sites, uh, they should have been jointly assessed because of the impact on, um, HRA with, um, the, the other directive.
My lady, in my, in my submission, that those points were before the High Court and the intersection, because there, there was a whole argument, as my ladyship will recall, about, um, the, the EIA case law, and, um, how, how that case law, whether it's applicable in this, in this particular circumstance in that way, it, the, the, the.
Well, no doubt, no doubt your junior will be able to point out for us exactly where that point was pleaded, first of all, and where it was articulated, because speaking for myself, I couldn't find it. And I've been through the papers quite thoroughly.
My lady, yes, I note the request for the reference, and we'll provide it. The other, the other points on the grounds of appeal also raise the question, and this is the, what I've been referring to on each occasion, is the Dutch nitrate's question, which is in light of Sweetman and the Dutch nitrate's decisions. Did the judge take the correct approach to the arguments that the HRA was unlawful because it didn't meet the sufficient, sufficient scientific, um, level? And that that analysis by the High Court is not a question about, it, it is, it goes further than just an irrationality review.
Well, she applied the, the Court of Appeal authorities by which she was bound, which say that it's Weddensbury. There's two Court of Appeal authorities that clearly say the standard you apply is Weddensbury. So in order to get around that, you've got to get to the Supreme Court first. And without that, the judge has got to apply, um, the Court of Appeal, surely. So how do you get that test off the ground?
My lady, it was got off the ground, again, I'll get the, um, references and.
No, I'm not saying it wasn't argued, but, um, the judge was obliged to follow, um, what the Court of Appeal said.
My lady, it wasn't, it wasn't argued in quite that way, and I can, I, uh, there'll, there'll be references to show, um, that that wasn't the way in which it was quite put. But certainly, the question about the, the, the level and the Dutch nitrate's point, if I can put it quickly briefly like that, was before the court. So again, um, Lord Justice Lewison then deals with the first order, that's at E forty one. Which doesn't deal with the questions to be referred to the CJEU, doesn't deal with act clair, or, or irrelevance, or the other bases on which the discretion not to refer in light of the case law is exercisable. And hence, the application was made. And that's at E forty five onwards. For the decision to be reopened. The gist of the referral questions is at E fifty two to fifty three.
Like the other one, was that the first time they were articulated?
Yes, although, my lord will be, your lordship will be aware, that it's not required when the request is made for them to be articulated in this sort of detail. But they were then articulated in this detail.
It was a question of fact, I was just interested to know whether that was the first time.
My lord, yes, they were. Articulated in this detail at this point. And then page eighty one is where Lord Justice Lewison deals with the reopening application. And here in paragraph five, he does state that there's no point of law involved that would warrant a reference to the CJEU. But for all the reasons that are set out in our skeleton argument, and against the background of the case law to which I took the court this morning. and against the background of the case law to which I took the court this morning, our submission is that does not deal with the matter in the way that is required.
Why not?
In this particular-
Why not? He's given reasons, he said there's no point of law involved that would warrant a reference to the CJ EU. Now that's giving reasons for refusing to exercise a discretion to send something to the CJ EU. What does he need to say?
As we've discussed, the case law on whether there's an obligation to refer, how the discretion should be exercised, articulates that threefold or fourfold, depending on how one looks at it, approach to the exercise of discretion.
Well, isn't this number one, it's not relevant?
My lady, no, I don't see where you get that from. And I don't think-
Plain language of the sentence, there is no point of law involved that would warrant a reference to the CJ EU. The test for sending it there is it's going to be a point of interpretation which is necessary for the court to be able to decide the case. Therefore, if there is no point of law involved that would warrant a reference to the CJ EU, the judge is saying in shorthand, there is no point which it is necessary for this court to consider in order to be able to deal with the matter.
My lady, no, the words, the words are general words, the general words that say I'm not going to refer. If I can again put things colloquially. That sentence is not saying the reason that I'm referring or not referring is because the points are irrelevant. And to be, in essence, it's not surprising it doesn't say that, because in the Chislet case, the points were irrelevant.
That's a question of debate, and the judge came to the view that they weren't.
My lady, against the background of the Chislet points, very differently from the Hoplins case, in my submission is that that sentence doesn't bear the weight, my lady, your ladyship is putting on it. Because of the nature of the case, that simply is not a sentence that says that the points are irrelevant in a way that is that my ladyship is suggesting.
How should he have put it then, if that was what he intended to say? There is no relevant point involved that would warrant a reference to the CJ EU?
My lord, the, in our skeleton argument, we address in detail, in a way that I'm certainly not going to be able to deal with now, the reasons why the reference was required to be made. And at-
I think my lord's question was slightly different.
Yes.
My lord's question was, so what should he have said?
Yes, in short form, just in short form, it should have been articulated. Either that there was an irrelevance and why, or that there was act clair and why, or that there should be a referral.
So for example, just to test the point, the reasons given by the judge in the court below, there is no point of law involved of such relevance as would warrant a reference to the CJ EU. That have done the trick?
My lord, I would have to think carefully about that, I find it rather invidious in these circumstances to be asked about how I should articulate what the-
Well, it's the standard, it's not invidious to be asked to assess the court.
Not at all.
On the question of what standard of reasons or what quality of reasons is required in the relevant sense for our purposes here.
Yes, yeah.
I hope you would be able to help.
Yes, and indeed, the submission has been made throughout the skeleton about what the standard is. And it has to reach the resubstandard of explaining why the reference has not been made, either on the basis of the discretion that is available to the judge, or because it's irrelevant, the point is irrelevant.
But as I understand it, you say it's not good enough to meet the resubstandard to say it's irrelevant, or simply to say it's act clair, or there's no point of interpretation that even arises. None of that would be good enough. You would have to say why the judge considers that it's irrelevant, why the judge considers it's act clair, by citing no doubt a number of authorities to the effect, and why it doesn't arise, otherwise that doesn't meet the resubstandard.
My lady, no, just because if I can take by way of the way that my lord, Lord Justice Lewison dealt with other points. Those points aren't dealt with in great detail, but there's more than a one liner, if I can put it like that, if one sees paragraphs one, two, four. It's not that there's an obligation to give reasons in detail. But there is an obligation to go beyond a one liner.
But the one liner comes at the end, after he's explained, the one liner is the conclusion. Because of X, Y, Z, there's no point of law involved that would warrant a reference to the CJ EU.
Oh, but that's exactly-
You can't break it all into little bits.
No, indeed, so there's two things to be said about that, and that's why in the skeleton we do deal in detail why the CJ EU, why what goes before this line doesn't do what my lordship suggests it does. And secondly, well, I'll just leave it at that, that it's absolutely right that if there's something that goes before and then this is the conclusion, that might meet the standard. But in my submission, that standard is not met in this instance for the reasons in the skeleton argument. My lord, I've trespassed quite significantly on the court's patience in terms of timing.
Not at all.
You've asked me a lot of questions.
We've had many questions to ask you and you've helped us with those, thank you. Is there anything else you want to submit to us?
My lord, not at this point, I, no, not at this point.
Thank you very much. We'll come back at five past two.
All rise.